Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight to discuss the town's business. We ask that as we go forward, you would guide and direct us and help us make the best decisions for the town and its residents. We have a lot of business to attend to tonight, and we sure do need your direction. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
You guys, R E M C want to go first, since you've got other appointments?
We want to start out kind of...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, I didn't know if you wanted to wait or what.
No. One of the... We'll start out kind of going over the three years that we've had, that we've been doing, you know, the electric work for you guys. So on the first sheet, you'll see, this was from the work plan, some of the improvements that we had come up with from that plan, and then, we're in the blue is what we actually got done, the capacitor banks at the three phase, down at the old elevator. Got transformer removed, retired the old capacitors, retired some wire that was crossing, the pole testing, pole replacements. I think we've got two of those left to do. Everything else has been changed, and we ended up changing about thirty, I believe. And then, of course, the tree trimming. Going forward, you know, we're here to kind of discuss a new deal, a new three-year sign-up. These are just some ideas that we had, that we would, you know, kind of propose. I would like to, as far as engineering, we've done a G I S map, there's a picture of it here, of a section of it. You know, we did the basics. I would like to go in and do a little more detailed map, inventory poles, wire sizes, pole sizes. Right now, it's poles and transformers, so we know where everything's at. Get it to where you can actually click on it, you know, our guys have it on a map, they'll be able to get around a little better, click on it, see what's on the pole, you know, transformer size, construction, things like that. We need to do another system study, if you will, look at your loading, make sure everything's good, kind of look at some... I think in the first go-around, we did a lot of things to content that were really needed. You know, it was more of a, this has got to be done, this has got to be done. I think this time, we can probably take a look more at improving, making things better, some projects to do that. We made things, tried to make things better every time, but I think we can take that next step and kind of be a little more proactive.
And this engineering and mapping would help out considerably, because like you said, you guys could just, you know what's there.
Yes, and the engineering would include the, you know, the study, the work plan, kind of give us a direction for the three years. As part of that, we want to do a sectionizing study. I think that'd be a good idea, make sure everything is coordinated correctly as far as O C Rs and fuses for the loading. And then, the transformer loading, that's something we've talked about. We really don't have a lot of data to do it. It was something we would like to probably dig in a little deeper and see, you know, kind of how some of your loading is, if you have some transformers getting kind of peaked out as far as capacity. Try to be proactive and take care of some things before they start going bad. And then, one thing we had talked about, and I mean, this is up to the board, do a study, kind of look at the demand on your three-phase counts, like the Solman and things like that, because I know, I don't think the meters even bring up demand now that you use. You know, we could put a meter in there, actually see what the demand is, see what's hitting your power bill, because I know, I mean, that's a big part of that power bill, so give you, give some more information on that, maybe, you know, help you out as far as knowing what's on the bill, and I'm not saying change the rates, but that's a big part of it, so. As far as maintenance, we did, we need to do some O C R changes, you know, we try to keep those on like a three-year cycle, change them out, the breakers. And then, the tree trimming, we did quite a bit on, I think we did more than half the town on what we did, so I think that's been a pretty good, pretty good bonus. It's nice over here with all the alleys, it's, most things are pretty easy to get to. We don't, we don't see that a lot.
Yeah, in the right ways, yes.
And as far as construction for the next three years, you know, we're going to poll tests at the end of this year, so we'll have pole changes on the south end, south of thirty-six next year. I would say we'll probably be in that, you know, thirty, thirty range again. It's going to be no different than the north, I'm guessing. And then, you know, we really need to do that study to see what other projects need to be done and where we can improve things. That's why the engineering in the first, the first year, I think, is pretty important. Just kind of lay things out here for the, on the schedule for twenty-two, and then we talked about, you know, an eighty thousand dollar cap, so this should add up to eighty thousand if you add it up. The first year, we had some engineering in there, a little less construction, then the maintenance and the tree trimming. And then, the last two years, we would take that engineering money and basically put it towards construction and maintenance. You know, once, once we have that direction, know where to go, we can... Give us, give us a good plan, and we can start, start doing it. But I think, you know, in the past three years, it's kind of a learning curve, but it's worked out, it's worked out well for us, and I think I would like to say it for you guys.
Yeah, it's helped us a hundred percent. I'm thankful for you guys.
I know we were over here last night on that, it's like, we had a jumper burn off the Solman. Better be safe having that. Oh, yeah, and I talked to Brad, and I was like, he said, "I'm not sure," and I said, "That, do that every time."
We don't want nobody hurt until we get somebody trained, and it's a no-brainer.
Especially when we start getting into the three-phase loadings.
What it is, yeah.
Chad, you want to talk about some of the contracts?
So I gave the contract to Jay. Basically, you know, I can send it to you electronically or whatever you want, it's basically a copy of what I have. All I did was change the dates in there, and then, obviously, the first contract was a hundred thousand dollars a year, and you guys, and you guys said go down to eighty thousand, so that's what we did. Really, the only language that changed was, we had in there, we were going to come report to this board four times a year. We can keep that in there. I put two are as needed, so if you guys want us to come every month, we'd come back every month, but I kind of feel like communication's been pretty good as far as, you know...
Yeah, I have no complaints.
Okay, okay. Really, that's the, the only language change that was in there, was that, but changed the dates to, you know, took out essentially up to twenty-one, inserted twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, so.
We did it, we went back and forth a few times last time, changed, tweaked a few things, so Chad's, I don't need to read it, if Chad says that's what's changed, then we should be fine.
We make a motion to accept the contract with R E M C for the next three years.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
We appreciate it, and all the employees do too. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great. It's a good working relationship.
We'll sign this, and we'll get it back to you.
We're not in any hurry. It doesn't start until January twenty-two, so we got plenty of time.
I'll tell Jay about it.
Oh, we need to by tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob.
Say that for twenty-one's, we're pretty fast.
No, thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Have a good meeting. Okay, is there anybody else that's got any commitments or anything? Do you want to go first, or?
I do have to leave about seven, seven fifteen, Jay, but I mean, I've got plenty of time, so.
Okay, let's get started, let's...
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the minutes of the three previous meetings.
Second.
And third?
Aye. How's that? I don't even have long.
The claims and warrants. Claim, correction to A P V two-seven-six-two-seven slash the H number, check number sixty-five thirty-nine, hundred, hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Three seventy-four, wrong vendor was pulled up, so we had to correct it. We had to avoid that one, and we just...
Thank you. Okay. End of month, August, twenty-seven thousand nine five dollars and five cents, and for this meeting, it's six hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred, or two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
I make a motion, we allow all claims and warrants that have been mentioned?
Second.
One favor? Bank reconciliations for the end of August, utilities, two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents for the town, excuse me, one million, ten seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and six cents. Payroll, three thousand, six dollars and eight cents, and customer deposits, thirty-four thousand and fifty dollars.
I make a motion, we accept all bank reconciliations for the end of the month, for August end of the month.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrants in amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents for eight twenty-six, nine-two, nine-nine, and nine sixteen.
I make motion to payroll warrant.
Second.
To either.
That one or five? Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Through the end of the year, yeah. Yeah, depending on what you decide on. Yeah, maybe do one.
Put that in there, and then another one, and then it's still be like that.
Kathy, billing adjustment, the one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-three cents. How's the motion do?
I make a motion to do an adjustment.
Second?
Second.
Any favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we got the two thousand twenty-two budget adoption, ordinance two-oh-two-one, dash oh-nine, dash oh-one.
Make a motion to accept budget adoption.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Do we need all these numbers, Kathy?
With the number, I'm sorry?
Um, yes.
Do you have to re, I'm sorry, Jay, I don't...
We need to go through, go through all the numbers?
Oh, no, you don't have to, no. Thank you. I mean, everybody wants to know. The total budget's four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, with a tax levy of a hundred and thirty thousand. You all do need to sign though, right?
Yes.
You have the right box.
Just make sure you sign, get your links printed out, just sign for the right of it.
He wants me to refer him, not me.
Yeah, he signed wrong, please.
The only one left, I'm sorry. Keep the straight, Kathy.
Yeah.
Sometimes that's a pretty good job.
I think it starts from...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do bottom one.
Yeah.
We got the bid for the fire hydrants, need to open.
Do you want to open them, or start them?
Great Carnet, he says. Anybody know that, remember that person?
Yes, I know.
I'm, this is from some guy named Robert Allen. He wants number eleven, six-inch Mueller, forty dollars.
Number eleven?
Forty dollars. What's open there? Mr. Allen also put a bid on number forty-two, six-inch Mueller, seventy-five dollars.
Forty-two, seventy-five.
Correct. Number fourteen, forty-five dollars. This is from Candy Bear. And last, Candy Bear, number eleven, seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
How much?
Seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Hello, I like your shirt.
You said number eleven.
Yeah, so we had two bids on number eleven, one for forty dollars, one for seventy-six fifty-one, and then, we had one bid each on number forty-five and number fourteen, and they were all over the, that's all within the minimums.
Both of you bid on eleven, but Candy got that at seventy-six fifty-one, and then you got number forty-two at seventy-five. And then, she bid on fourteen also.
And the ones that's not taken will go to the salary chart. Do I have a motion to accept the bids?
So Candy, she didn't have her even been on it, can I pick up a couple more for whatever you get out of it at the junkyard?
You probably ought to let everyone.
Or not even mess with it, so you don't have to go through it again.
You have to advertise, ties that to the public.
I know. People, you don't think people have...
Okay, that's fine.
You can go down to junkyard.
Yeah.
Getting forty-five.
I make a motion, we accept all bids.
Don't vote on it, okay?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
They're voting now.
The November eighteenth meeting will be held at the Firehouse due to the community dinner being held, and Skip's already checking it is available.
That's in November, right?
Did you get that?
Eighteenth.
At the Firehouse, in November.
Eighteen.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, Gale Rider Purdue Extension wants to use community center, November the eighteenth, from eleven to five, to assist people enrolling in Medicare Marketplace, SNAP, WIT, and housing benefits. She is aware that any COVID changes could cancel this event.
As long as there's no cop with anybody else, I make a motion to allow her to come with the seniors.
Is she going to be out here for the dinner?
No, but that's no problem. She's already talked to Judy Jones and discussed it, and they're hoping to advertise that they'll be here earlier, and...
Yeah, that's a good time for that, tell the early people.
So you motions?
Yeah.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
We've got a ordinance, number two-oh-two-one, dash oh-nine, dash oh-two, and it's an adjustment.
Oh, sorry. Scott looked that over, we got to, we got to discuss that.
Yeah, why don't we wait till you get to the other changes you want to make, and then, let's talk about that one, because we just need some clarity on what your intent was.
Okay.
So. We got to, we want to make sure we're writing it the way you want, of what you guys want.
Okay, and we've got some other salary adjustments. Brad McGrannahan, eight dollars, Tanner Russell, five fifty, Brad McBray, four dollars, and Ron Bailey is one dollar, that's adjustments per hour.
And I forgot to add John in that one. I didn't get it typed in there.
Okay.
His was two thousand, is what?
Did we already do the other one?
Yeah, but we need clarification.
I make a motion to accept all the raises.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
We asked about John. For the rest of this year, we talked about a thousand dollar raise, but do you mean a thousand more dollars between now and the end of the year, or do you mean his pay rate would go up as though he were making that much more annually, so he, in other words, he wouldn't get a thousand dollars between now and the end of the year, he'd get a third of that roughly?
We wanted to bump him up to the forty-six.
And you...
Well, first he did the thousand.
We already did this.
Forty-three.
You want him to be paid a thousand dollars more for the rest, I mean...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the rest of the year.
Yes.
So, yeah, so he's at forty-three now, his salary was forty-three, so you want to bump him up, so he'll make forty-four by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We rationally want...
We already did.
We already did that.
Well, what he's asking is, do you want it just added to his salary to where it's rational about till next year, or do you want that three thousand to be caught up by the end of the year?
Oh, okay, just where it catches up.
And then, in twenty-two, he'll be at forty-six for the whole year.
Yeah, I didn't say that, like, we couldn't write it either, but... So, so he gets...
By the end of the year.
Okay. So we'll have to change that then, right?
Yes. And I'll have to, because this started there, so I'll have to go back and, yeah.
Yeah.
So can we still go ahead and vote on that then?
No, we better write it up better, because this isn't going to be the way we need it. We're going to have to have, because he got paid more for a few pays, and then, it's going to go up even more now.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We'll check the math. I'll be up there Monday.
But they can approve the other two thousand tonight?
They can, yeah. Yeah, he can make his, so salary, the vote tonight is for his twenty-twenty-two salary to be forty-six.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
Sure. I make a motion that we allow all the aforementioned salary raises to John Cook, Brad McGrannahan, Chandler Russell, Brad McBray, and Ron Bailey. How's that?
Okay, second.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got a quote for fifty-five hundred dollars from Fox Safety for equipment and software updates to, for the police department. Marshall Cook has asked for reappropriation of fifty-five hundred dollars from Corporation one-oh-one, dash one-one-zero, dash one-one-six, part-time deputy salary from them to cover the costs.
I make a motion, we allow Deputy Marshall Cook to make this purchase, and a motion to approve the, and include the reappropriation of funds.
Second.
One favor?
Also to include that last sentence.
Yes.
Do you want to approve him to go ahead and sign that, because he's the one that knows it?
Yes, and to go ahead and sign the service agreement.
As part of that.
And the order form to be signed. Okay?
Yeah. Add that to that. We got a quote for valve replacement from M I D Rescue for five thousand seventy-two-five dollars, and that is... And that's down at the, that's a valve replacement down at the back station. Yes, down to the park.
Yeah.
Well, you just about have to do it. You don't have a choice, right?
I hadn't talked to him about this, but I haven't talked to him about it before enough, Jimmy too, yeah, it needs, it needs done.
It's what we tried to get, what's the name, Baron, that was during the COVID, I saw my son.
Gotcha.
I make a motion to accept the, I'll be getting the right paper here.
Here, this? No, here. The dollar amounts on the thirty-five, seven hundred twenty-one.
Yeah, for me, rescue for the replacement of the eight-inch valve at the rest station.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
For the five thousand seven ninety-five, is that what that profile?
Yes.
And we got two quotes for cleaning of the sewer tank inside the back station, was last done in twenty-eighteen, and we got two quotes from Eco Infrastructure Solutions for four thousand dollars a day, and they're estimating two days, and the other is from Snow White Services Incorporated for thirty-nine hundred and fifty dollars, and that's total package.
Snow White's one done last time, isn't it?
I make a motion to accept Snow White for three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
The fire department's got a hundred and sixty-eight runs to date as of today for
Uh, the Fire Department's got a hundred and sixty-eight runs to date as of this day for the year. So we've gotten busy and probably continue that for the rest of the year and the next year. PK and myself went up to Wyoming, Michigan, to update HME, inspect the truck last Wednesday, Thursday. Found a couple small things, they had already take care of them, and they shipped it down to Florence, Kentucky, where it was getting labeled, uh, some lights and some, uh, back paneling put on. That was all part of the deal with the contract, so it was nothing extra. And we should be now there tomorrow, roughly nine o'clock, and be here sometime between twelve-thirty and one-thirty. So, if you're around, come see it.
Thank you guys for taking your time going and inspecting it. That's on time.
You don't even have to wash it. Don't have to wash it for the parade on Friday, Saturday.
Might have a lot of bugs on it. Oh, right. Yeah.
I attended my first MPa meeting about three weeks ago and got sworn in, so I'm official MPa commissioner now. So anyway, that's the, um, the Walbach River run was a success for Clinton. Between the Park Board and the Fire Department, we supported that pretty well. And the Fire Department put a rescue boat on the river, Perry still kind of down here, and Clinton came up. So when everybody left, they had plenty of people on, in boats to help them all the way. The winning boat was an hour and thirty-five minutes to Clinton in a kayak, pretty quick. I think it went well. We ended up twenty-two kayaks and a canoe, and a canoer won. Division.
And where was it he came from? Colorado?
Arizona.
Arizona.
Yeah. Just come to see the Walbach River, didn't know anything about the, the race that he got in it.
All right.
Won two hundred dollars.
Won two hundred dollars. It was a good event, I'd have to say, and they've already changed the date next year to the weekend prior to Labor Day. I think there's too many conflicts and some of the people in Clinton didn't want it to be that weekend, so I think it's.
Well, everything's going on down there on Water Street.
Well, just a heads up, from now on to the end of the year, your MPa meeting, you're gonna have a lot of dollars assigned because they'll do the rate structure for next year. Something to look forward to.
We blame him, right?
Oh, no.
Last bill.
Yeah, actually, in the last three years, the overall, three years been a deduct, so.
Okay.
Grand Blue, I'm here on behalf of the Monazuma Cover Bridge Committee. I have a short list of requests, and some of them have already been addressed. And I'll leave this with you when I'm done. We request permission to close section of East Crawford Street to the west of North Washington for the food vendor trailers from October first for setup through October seventeenth. We request electricity in the festival area from Monday, October fourth through Sunday, October seventeenth. And apparently, that has already been requested. We're asking for picnic tables to be placed near the vendor trailers on Crawford. That's already been requested. Requesting seven trash cans for the festival area, also already requested. Request use of the town's Kubota side-by-side to pull the tram trailer during the Cover Bridge Festival. We would also like to use it for a test run of the route prior to the festival, whenever it's convenient for the town. Request permission to place six country store signs and banners on Jefferson in front of the Scout House and in the median on Crawford. And when I say the median, just the end cap on the east end. There's, it kind of widens out a little bit, and there's some grass there. We want to put one facing from the east and one facing from the west.
You talking about where the concrete ends and the grass starts?
The very end there, I think.
Yeah, it's got that little semicircle.
Were they poured new?
As long as it's not tall enough to block any vision. If it is, you have to move it back down.
They're not very tall.
Because we got, we've had.
Okay, let's see. Request permission to park the tour wagon in front of the shack on North Washington during the festival days. The Kubota will be relocated to the garage at the bed and breakfast on Jefferson at the end of each day for safekeeping. Do we need to take the wagon with us, too?
Yeah, we can't leave it sitting on the street.
Can't leave it sitting there. Okay, all right.
You don't want to. You don't want to.
All right, that's, that's everything.
Okay, I, another question, is there a garage but Kubota in?
Um, the, yeah. No, no, it's going to the garage.
Well, it's garage.
Yep.
Okay. The only other thing is whoever's driving it has to be insured or their license and a copy of it at the clerk's office for drivers.
Okay.
For insurance.
And I would assume that you don't want any suspensions on, I, that, I would assume never suspension.
If they don't have driver's license, because she's gotta have a copy of it.
I'm just saying, if I asked somebody to drive and they said, I, my license has been suspended in the past, but it's active now. I don't know that I.
If it's good now, she can get a copy of it right.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Minimum we gotta have.
Yeah.
If you want to go stricter, I don't have a problem with that either.
And she needs a list of the volunteers that are gonna be on the wagon for insurance purposes.
Right, Candy's aware of that.
Who's gonna be the tour guide.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Who was that, Stuart?
Yeah.
Thanks, Graham.
Me? No, just me, special person.
Well, okay. I'm asking, uh, for a pole saw for the town utility department. They've used mine in the past, which mine don't telescope up. But that, the drops coming into houses, any low limbs, they can do that without getting the bucket truck out, using hydraulic saw or whatever. Pole saw, it's called. It's a telescoping pole saw. I called M and N and, uh, regular six forty, and the town have it for five forty. That's where we purchase our chainsaws and any equipment like that, because they are an authorized steel dealer.
Second.
Okay, made the motion, second, one favor?
Uh, just thank everybody for what everybody does and on their own time, and that's about all I've got.
Well, we're getting ready for Monazuma Homecoming Saturday, and the festivities start at ten-thirty with a parade and a meal and a meeting here at one. And so we hope to have a good crowd in spite of the COVID numbers. And then also, we're getting ready for festival. We're getting ready for Pranks in the Park, October thirtieth, and that'll be at Reader Park. And that's our one and only fundraiser this year, which we're trying, the Park Board's trying to raise money for the new splash pad. So we hope we have a good crowd. We're getting some volunteers already and, and looking forward to, to that, too. So there's a lot going on, and we always need volunteers and, and donations. And we do have raffle tickets for the grill, so, for the Park Board. So see any Park Board member for that, and that's it.
I have a minute.
Down here, we need to have a meeting for this labor position. Is that the only other application we got?
Okay.
I think we need to jump on, so we get four guys working together, hopefully we can keep them.
Right.
That boy comes with an application.
So whenever we can make arrangements to meet with him or whatever.
I'm, I'm game. Are we meeting after this?
I have no problem with you and, you and Jenny meeting, wasn't it? We will have to hold an executive, and then he can be, he can be hired to help in that project meeting. But two guys can meet with him, interview a guy.
Didn't have to be executive.
Diane, okay.
I'm okay.
If you guys set it up, meet with him at the utility office and.
Yeah.
We'd like, I, you know, I'd like to meet him sometime, but I'm okay with doing it that way. We've got to get on this and get some help.
The only, only other thing I have is, and I don't know, do we have to have a motion to put up stop signs? Well, and I don't have the paper where they're, what's this called here?
Stanley Drive.
Stanley Drive here, where they come out of the, there's no stop sign there.
And, and Gideon Alley.
And Gideon Alley, there's no stop sign on either end of it, so if somebody was to pull out from here or the other two places.
So on either end of Gilling?
No, there's, there's nothing, yeah.
So we really need one on each end?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'd be one there on thirty-six and one up on twelve percent.
I don't know that you need a motion for the alley, because there's state law that says you have to stop when you're leaving an alley.
But it's not alley anymore.
Gets a draw.
We have to change the name to nine-one-one.
We had to change it because nine-one-one, because there's a resident.
I'll write it up. I go ahead and put stop sign.
Is it Gideon Alley or Gideon Lane?
Gideon Lane, isn't it?
Gideon Lane.
I think it's Gideon Lane.
Yeah, Gideon Lane, that's right, and Stanley Drive.
Stanley Drive, yeah.
All right, so you're making a motion?
I need to do an ordinance, really.
Okay.
Make sure you.
So they don't need a motion, they'll wait till the ordinance?
You do your fir-, let's consider this the first read. I'll write it up next, I'll have it for your next, next meeting, I.
I know it sounds simple, but if somebody was.
No, you're right, yeah, I, I know.
We done that down there.
First reading for stop signs to be placed at both ends of Gideon Lane and one at Stanley Drive and Jackson.
So do we need a motion to approve the first reading? I make a motion, we approve the first reading. As the stoplights. Stop, stop signs.
We can't afford a stop light.
Oh, gosh. Okay.
Kathy?
Details, details. Hey, I do have another one. I forgot about it.
Try and get that in.
I forgot. Scott, I got, I have one more. Do we know anything about the bathrooms at Reader Park? Have they been fixed?
They're fixed.
They are fixed, good. So they'll be ready. They'll be ready for the festival and Pranks in the Park.
And all the electrics fixed, too.
Okay, awesome. Oh, good. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. That's the only way to thank.
Close that book.
I'm closing, I'm gonna mark it out and close.
Stanley Drive.
It was named after Wayne Stanley.
Yeah, 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 we made it officially a street. You can't do same day, same meeting like the county does. We can, but we need to do it right, really. Me, uh, speaking of ordinances, I do have somebody looking on updating the ordinances. That book's not been updated since 2015, so. Yes, I know she, she, she's got through everything I had, but I have her cross-checked and with Kathy because I think I'm missing a few things probably that got done either. I didn't do them, or, I mean, I kept a copy or something like that. Our building inspector's coming up Monday morning. We're gonna go look at Jefferson and Penn, the two in particular. Then we get to utility office, if John could be around that day, that'd be good.
That's Monday mornings?
Ten a.m. Range care. I'm gonna meet her up here, too. Couple of, you know, we had our meeting with IDM about the water. I thought it went, I haven't talked to you guys, I thought it went pretty well. They, they were pretty nice about it. I think they're wanting to help us find a solution that they're interested in. They're gonna submit a, they submitted a violation thing in an agreed order. They have to redo that because one of the violations has already been fixed and corrected, and they're taking that off. It's, it was fine. It was basically a snafu.
Miscommunication.
Yeah, stuff not getting in the mail, not getting the right place.
The only, I mean, it all goes back to the COVID thing.
Well, it was COVID started. And the other issue, they are gonna reduce our fine. I don't know how much, but, well, part of that's because they're taking away one of them. And so I've not gotten that agreed order yet, so, but I think that they had an idea of doing some additional testing of some of the wells more frequently, and instead just doing one test with the system, doing it at the wellhead, sort of so that you could isolate and see if this is a problem with one well or all three wells. And so hopefully we'll start doing that. We don't, we don't have to wait for the agreed order to do that. We can go ahead and start doing the testing now.
Great.
So, um, I'm sure there's something else I'm forgetting, but, oh, we did sign the contract with Surveyor. I noticed they changed the date to May, April, when they, they thought they'd start, so, maybe we'll get here a little sooner than we hoped. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we found a lot of pins that they can use, too.
Oh, really?
The ones we pulled out of the old playground, the black playground equipment.
Oh, really?
Shorter ones, yeah.
The shorter ones, we used all them.
Okay, cool.
That's it? Do you have something else to talk?
No.
Yesterday, we did talk to Jimmy on the phone a little better, his wife, and he is doing better than they expected. And right as, right now, everything's looking pretty good.
Awesome. That's good news.
Everybody keeping them in our thoughts.
Yeah.
Yes. Great.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.